All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is now six o'clock and I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Committee of the Hall for the City of Bloomington to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matty.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milo Wambly.
Here. I understand that Councilmember Corio would like to participate remotely, so can I have a motion to allow her to participate remotely?
I move that we allow Councilmember Corio to participate remotely for medical reasons.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Ward. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matty.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
I.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Councilmember Corio, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and I should state that this is for medical reasons, correct? Okay.
That's correct. I broke my foot just walking, so that's the kind of week I'm having.
Well, sorry to hear that and wish you the best in your recovery. So next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment tonight?
We do. We have two people registered to speak and we received no emailed public comment. The first one up will be Thomas Larry.
Okay. And if you'd allow, let me go ahead and read a statement prior to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. My name is Tom Larry. I'm another sewage, not water victim. I live in a small working people's neighborhood without even a nickname. We're excluded in all plans from this, from the city, including fixing sewers despite the fact that Colton and Locust is two blocks away. Apparently, the city engineer has made that decision. Much has been said in recent meetings that I won't repeat, but I do have new questions that I cannot seem to get answered. The rain event titled "An Act of God" by Mr. Gleason and his staff, and then followed quickly by PMA to avoid any responsibility, went out for days. My house was struck with sewage within one hour of the advent of the flood. Sewage flood. The total rainfall therefore for myself and most others in this town is completely irrelevant. We had damage night one. My sewage came via four inches of, when four inches of rain was down. No one is talking about this fact. Further, Mr. Gleason nor PMA can even provide me with an hourly rain total in spite of the fact that I've asked Mr. Gleason via email six times. Four inches of rain is not an act of God. Is it accurate or fair for the city or PMA to infer and declare that any damage done at any time during the week-long period of that rain was because of the rain and therefore they have no responsibility? The facts completely say otherwise. The sewer that might have flooded my home is one of the sewers that Mr. Gleason just said was okay. Not okay, Mr. Gleason. It put your sewage in my basement. Blame it all on God. Let's see insurers and the city simply refuse to cover anything. When I try to discuss this with PMA, they say we don't have any information. When I ask why not, the city corporation council told the media that given to the insurer, they gave it to the insurer so that each claim would be investigated. I've not had an investigation of any kind. I've offered video evidence of exactly when the sewage flooded my basement and it has been rejected by PMA. PMA now says that some claims have been paid. Which ones? What's the criteria? What did it take for those people to get paid when we couldn't? So my concern is about sewer damage coming before the current state of affairs that we're talking about now. In the meanwhile, the cities presented, spent hours presenting massive detail on one of the CSOs who might be fixed in years to come. What about the others? Find ways to help us now. The city says, "Go see the SBA. Get a loan." The SBA says, "I'm too poor for a loan." Insurance denies me. Your insurance, insurance that Mr. Gleason feeds into. The final information is there is no money to help. Absolutely not true. There are millions in reserves. There's millions in COVID funds. I want to close by saying that you guys have mentioned God repeatedly. If you want to mention God, then you, you have to remember that you all or many of us have left and you should care enough to help. You want to blame it on God, read your Bible about what you're supposed to do for your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Who's next?
Next up and our final one is Susan Crawford.
Hello, my name is Susan Crawford and I'm going to follow along with some of the things that he has said. I know that State Farm, farmers in all state, paid their insurers money based on sewage drain coverage. And so those are major companies in this town that said, "There's a problem with the sewer drain." There was 15.7 inches of rain posted on the pantograph, has in the pantograph, and I had three feet of water. God is unimpotent and you're trying to tell me that he turned 15 inches of rainwater into three feet of water damage. I'm sorry, but I had no rain damage. My roof did not rain. I didn't have water from my roof. I didn't have water from my walls. But when I saw that there was something, water coming in my house, it was in my laundry room. Water was bubbling up from my drain and from my commode. That is where the rain does not come from. I'm sorry, it comes from the sky, but I had water coming from my commode and from my sewage drain. And I went, and they keep talking about, "We need to fix the sewer." Well, why are we gonna fix something that's not broke? If there's no damage to my, for my sewer, how can you be fixing it? I don't understand. And I went to, and I kept like the man said, we heard that there was going to be an investigation that the, your insurance company, I called and they said, "The person will be out there Monday or Tuesday." I'm still waiting. He was supposed to investigate my damage. I'm still waiting. He did not come. He hasn't seen my damage. He doesn't know. If you look, you had, they had to remove the drywall off my basement walls so you can see there's no water damage on my walls. So where did the water come from? The sewage, the sewer. So if I had water from only the sewer, how can they sit there and tell me, "Oh, there's no problem with our sewage system. We're not paying your claim"? I really have a problem with them not coming out to investigate my damage because I do have insurance. I have sewer and drain. My company did pay. And they said it was sewer and drain. So how can this other insurance company, who is, I don't know who they are, can say, "Uh, there's nothing wrong with the sewer and drain, but we're gonna fix it." Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
No more.
Okay, no written comments either?
No emailed public comments were received either.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. And there is only one item, so nothing to remove, I guess. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matty.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. Next item on the agenda is the regular agenda, presentation and discussion of topics related to city infrastructure and recent storm events as requested by the Public Works Department and the Administration Department. So I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks and then we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and the community. This is the presentation that we've talked about for several weeks now. And while we've done, you know, steps along the way, talking about different things that were relevant to the discussion tonight, this is the culmination. And really, the next steps after tonight are what happens next. But hopefully, the community appreciates the fact that we needed to report the facts and make sure that the elected officials are on firm ground with the facts for some potentially very tough decisions that they need to make going forward. Tonight is a little bit of a refresh from prior meetings, talking about the storm in greater detail, talking about our sewer infrastructure in greater detail, and then going to talk about some of the possibilities that aren't new possibilities. They've been mentioned in the past presentations. We have an hour allotted for staff to make this presentation and then we have an additional hour for the council members to ask questions. And we have got the Deputy City Manager that I'm gonna turn the floor over to here in a minute, along with the Public Works Director to his left, Kevin Cothe. To Kevin's left is the Assistant Public Works Director Bob Yale. And then to Bob's left is Craig Schonkweiler, who is the city engineer. Billy?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, really, we're hopeful that tonight we'll start to connect some of the dots that, that we've heard over the last several years, over the last several weeks as it relates to the storm in late June. And hopeful, hopefully will help to make some sense of how our system works and when we've talked about the amount of rain and how it impacted our community. It really hopefully helps to make some sense of that for people. We understand that people had tragic events happen. We understand that completely. But hopefully, this, while it may not satisfy some of the concerns, and we get that, hopefully it helps to give a better understanding of the way the system works, what we saw on that night, and frankly, possible action items going forward, which I think everyone has talked about wanting to see. And so with that, I'll turn things over to Kevin.
Thank you, Deputy C. Manager Tyus. Mayor and Council, good evening. Thank you for having me back again. This is going to be a bit longer presentation than the last one, so bear with me and hopefully I won't put any of you to sleep. But we're gonna review some of the data collected and some observations made and then provide some suggestions for steps looking forward. So with that, we'll begin and I want, just wanna, first off, next slide, please. Thank you, a lot of different people. It's not just about me. You've seen me up here, but the gentleman to my left have been a big part of everything that's been going on along with a huge teamwork from that very first night of June 25th with the storm event, you know, to acknowledge dispatch and fire and police, the emergency response coordination with, you know, our staff, our superintendents and our crews that responded that night, from the streets and sewers and solid waste divisions to our support staff that took calls and emails, website submissions through my Bloomington, to the engineering division who's been working with different residents and businesses to try to answer questions, troubleshoot and provide support to, you know, documenting the storm event, collecting the data you're gonna see tonight, the weather stations, the flow monitors, the drone photos, the survey-grade GPS, the GIS data analysis, mapping the infrastructure inspections for the bridges and culverts to make sure they were safe after the storm, the waterways for erosion, and just work putting these presentations together. Our water division who monitored the dams at Lake Bloomington and Evergreen while lake levels were elevated that, that weekend. And then economic community development with overhead sewer program and other supports they provide, finance for all the data analysis they've done and, and of course, administration, you elected for your support moving projects forward and funding those. So thank you all. It's not just about Public Works or me. It's about everybody working together and I thank you for that. So, next slide, please. So what we saw at June 25th, 26th, next slide, please. This, going back to the rainfall, okay, so this is a rain chart, the, one of the latest bulletin 75s from the Illinois State Water Survey and it's been updated for climate change and stuff like that. It's just within the last couple of years that this has been released. And, uh, thank you. And so this shows, you know, the, the frequency of rain events with, you know, everything from a two-month to a 500-year. And of course, now the terminology for like 100 years is a 1% probability for that type of event to occur in a given year. But you can see on the left that there's a table of time, so, you know, it's not just a rainfall per hour or, you know, two hours. It's different rainfalls over different periods of time. And we share this with you so that you can see that, like for instance, three hours Friday night, there were areas of Bloomington that had well over seven inches. And if you look at three hours and you take it out to the right, you'll see that, that a 6.1-inch rainfall would be a 500-year event. So technically, we're off the chart. Now, in, in the end, does it really matter that much? Well, the point is, is that this was a very significant rainfall and it is by far more than typical what we see. And whether you look at it for a three-hour period or a two-day period, it's, it's off the chart for, you know, this rain event. So just wanted to share that with you. This is data that's put together with, you know, client scientists, you know, climatologists and that type of thing. This is public data. You can, you can query on the website or, you know, the web to get it. So just wanted to share that information with you. And then, next slide, please. This is some weather stations that we've been starting to deploy and collect data ourselves. And this, these graphs show the rainfall on the evening of the 25th. And then at midnight, these data collectors reset to zero basically. So these locations in different parts of Bloomington Normal show that there was wide variability that evening in, in the intensity, the amount of rain that happened in certain locations. The characteristic of the curve is very similar, but just there was, you know, isolated areas where there was really, really heavy rain. And, and you can see that reflected in the red graph that gets all the way up to eight and three-quarter inches for that day. And then it hits, hits again on Saturday afternoon. And so this is important data because it not only helps to understand the storm event, but it also helps with hydraulic modeling that I'll talk about a little bit more, but it provides good data input because this is on five-minute increments and we can use that for a hydraulic model to, to study what would be the benefits of changing some things around and quantify that and know a little bit better than just guessing that doing this improvement is going to have this impact. And so, next slide, please. Another way to look at this data is rainfall inches per hour. So once again, on Friday night, in the worst scenario that we had data collected for, from our, you know, local collector, up to 10 inches of rain per hour was the heaviest rate, which is a lot of rain coming down very quickly. And then in other places, you know, even four inches is a lot of rain in an hour. But, but you can see that those intensity of rainfalls really had an impact for us in the storm. Next slide, please. This is a hydrograph data from the USGS, United States Geological Survey. And there are stream gauges on Sugar Creek near the west plant by, by Binward and then the south, southeast plant on the Little Kickapoo. And the, the Sugar Creek location's been in operation for many years. And you can see that the, the biggest height, flood height at Sugar Creek was from 1982, which was right at 14-foot. And, and that happened December 3rd, which was on frozen ground, which whenever we have frozen or fully saturated ground, we tend to get a lot more runoff. The, the 2021 event that we had in June, the water levels got to 12-foot, which is just above flood stage, but well below the 14-foot from 1982. And then in, in 2003, we had a pretty significant event that caused a 12.6-foot for flood stage, which was just a little bit higher than this. At Little Kickapoo, which is the top graphs, that station hasn't been there for very long and so it set the record with this storm for the flood stage for both height and also flow. The graphs on the left represent stream flow and cubic feet per second. And, and those logarithmic scales are a little bit harder to read, but because they're not just a straight scale and left, they're logarithmic. So but nonetheless, wanted to share with you some of the stream impacts downstream with this much rain. So, next slide, please. So what we saw was, you know, easily six to seven inches of rain that Friday. You know, if, since the ground was already saturated, it, it acts pretty much like a hard surface, a pervious area because the water can't soak in anymore. It's already, the ground's already full. And so we had, had more runoff than typical. And if you think about it, you know, just a thousand square foot home, and I know some homes are smaller, some are bigger, but for a thousand square foot of home for roof, getting six inches of rain, that's 500 cubic feet of water. That's, that's like the average consumption for residential household in Bloomington, how much water you use a month. But that's equates to 3, 3,740 gallons of water, which would pretty much fill that water truck in the picture. And, you know, if you'd equated it to 55-gallon rain barrels, 68 rain barrels you'd fill just off your roof from just that one storm event that Friday night. If you look at that in terms of the, you know, like a 10,000-square-foot lot, which is about average for, for Bloomington, some are smaller, some are bigger. That's 37,000 gallons of water that, you know, each property expected the city to take that 37,000 gallons and get rid of it. So that, that added up, you know, is enough to fill like Bloomington from empty. So just a lot of water when you, when you stop and think about it in terms of each residential property, in terms of all the businesses that were trying to get rid of that water that one night.
Kevin, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that, next to the last bullet point, I think is, is an important marker in that more than half of our properties in this community are of that size or larger.
Yeah.
And if you think about a gallon, and not to minimize any of this, but a gallon, a gallon of milk or a gallon bucket, that, more than half of the properties in our community were discharging 37,400 gallons of water. I mean, that's, it, it, that's not a normal amount of, of, of water, frankly. In a short amount of time, you know, that water, it goes somewhere. And so I don't think that's worth, I don't think we can minimize the amount of water that came down in a very short amount of time. So.
Thank you. Next slide, please. And as we all know from the news, this is not anything new. We've seen floods from, you know, around the state, around the country, around the world, and even 100 years ago. How time flies. August 12th caught my eye. You know, torrential rain flooded Bloomington Normal Streets and Basements. Normal and the Sugar Creek Valley got the worst of it, as did the Big Four Valley and East Douglas Street in Bloomington. A sewer blew up under pressure. This was a five-inch rainfall in a few hours. So, you know, nothing new, right? There's big rains, obviously not quite as big as what we just got because five inches in a few hours, we just saw, we got more than that. But what, what has changed in 100 years? Well, you know, 100 years ago, the, the combined sewers got overwhelmed and you could see that there was flooding, even enough pressure to blow apart a sewer, which in those days, the, the big ones were all brick and they weren't, they weren't lined. So, you know, there was enough pressure there that it, it caused that problem. And the, the Big Four Valley sewer refers back to the Big Four Railroad, which is the railroad tracks of the Norfolk Southern today and the Constitution Trail. And we know that there was floodwaters that flooded from upstream to downstream right through, you know, Gridley and Oakland through the public service yards onto the west. And, and so these are areas that have flooded before, but what did the city do about it? Well, right around World War II, just after World War II, the city took on a huge project to build relief sewers. And so like, to address the flooding for the Big Four, they put an eight-foot diameter pipe, eight-foot, right, right by the library, by the Bloomington Public Library. That's in addition to the over-six-foot diameter brick sewer that was there to begin with. And so surely that eight-foot diameter sewer, in addition to the other one, would have taken care of the flooding, right? Well, obviously not completely. No doubt it helped for a lot of storm events, but even all those relief sewers that represented millions of dollars of investment for that day, they helped. They didn't solve the problem. The, the point is, is that how big of a pipe do you need to carry what size of storm? And, you know, there can always be a bigger event than what will fit in a pipe. So just wanted to share those, those things with you. And then, you know, most recently, last, last week, Gibson City had a rainfall similar to ours, flooded the city, 200 people evacuated. The mayor made a note, like, because I was watching the news and he said that Gibson City had just finished separating their sewers. And so it could have been much worse is what he said, but yet they had basement backups and basement flooding as well. So the point is, is that we see this, whether it's climate change or whatever, we do see big events throughout the world. We were rather fortunate from the standpoint that no loss of life. We did have basement backups. We did have property damage, obviously. But, you know, things could have been worse. So just wanted to share some perspectives of, you know, different flooding events from, from 100 years ago to just last week. So next slide, please. Storm event review. Next slide, please. One of the things that the 2014 sewer and stormwater master plan focuses a lot of, lot, lot on is INI, inflow and infiltration. And we just wanted to share with you that this is a problem in Bloomington and there's a lot of sources for inflow and infiltration. One of those that's highlighted or that's noted on this is connected to foundation drains. So back in the early 80s, there, there was an issue identified where homes that had been built in the 50s, 60s and early 70s, particularly in the Fairway Knolls, Holiday Knolls and Broadmore subdivisions, had their footing tiles connected into the sanitary sewer service. And this results in groundwater getting into the sanitary sewer system, which is INI. And, and that type of thing is not allowed. It's banned by city code and it is not, is against, you know, national and state standards as well. So in the early 80s, the city took on an effort to identify those homes that had the cross-connection with dye testing and other methods and then worked in those neighborhoods to help homeowners get their footing tile out of the sanitary sewer service and connect it into a sump pit on the outside. So even though that was done to help out the situation, INI still remains high in these areas as well as some other areas in Bloomington. And what's the impact of INI? Well, it, it's not only that the sewer will fill up from, you know, a normal base flow and potentially back up into people's homes, which we have seen some of that as well, even in a separated sewer system. But it also causes excess water to go to the wastewater treatment plants that Binward operates and that, that impacts those treatment plants in terms of their capacity and, and also in terms of the cost of treatment for having extra capacity just to handle that excess water that shouldn't really be in the sewer system. So a lot of the sewer and stormwater master plan talks about ways to address the INI problems. So a lot of the sewer and stormwater master plan talks about ways to address the I N I problems. In the lower left is a picture of smoke coming out of the ground. That is one method that I said smoke and dye testing, that's smoke testing. And that's an example of where you put a smoke that is safe. It's not like smoke from a fire, but it's a way to visually see where a sewer might be getting I N I into it. So in this case, that front lawn would indicate a sewer service that had a problem. And just like the smoke can get out, water can get in. So that's one tool, and we've used that in some areas of Bloomington to help identify problems. And, you know, there's an area by Miller Park that we just used it on this year to try to help solve I N I problems that are causing flooding over in the Miller Park area. So. Oh, yep, okay. Next slide, please. Wanted to share with you a little bit about how modern subdivisions with their infrastructure, what is provided for different lots and so forth. In this case, this is an addition to Fox Creek Village. And the addition shows on this plan the lots. And then there's some pump drain lines provided to each lot. And that provides a connection point where properties can connect their sump pump to, and it's all underground, doesn't flow on top of the surface and just avoids problems with wet yards that are wet from sump pump surface draining or ice buildup in the winter. And then that all connects into a storm sewer that goes to detention basin. And just wanted to provide a connection to you between drainage and traffic is an illustration. So when you think about a drop of water that's trying to get away, think about, you know, like a, if you're driving in the Chicago area, for instance, on the tollway, you know, as as the traffic moves along at the speed limit or whatever, and then all of a sudden more traffic gets on that road and it starts to get more congested, the traffic starts to slow down and eventually gets to a crawl. Well, that's kind of what happens when the water's coming down and getting into the inlets, getting into the storm sewer or combination sewers. As that sewer gets fuller, the water starts to slow down because as you get more into the pipe, it's trying to get out, but at the same time, more is coming in than what to get out, everything starts to slow down. So just like that highway in Chicago that, you know, there's no apparent reason, it just starts to slow down. Eventually, once the traffic lets up, then things start to flow again and you get back up to speed. In some cases, you'll sure run across a stalled vehicle or a crash, that would be like a blockage in a pipe. But this is just a kind of a visual way to picture that just because the pipes filled up and everything started slowing down and in some cases then backing up into basements. Once the rainfall lets up and the sewers can get caught back up, everything starts flowing again. And when people said, oh, well, you know, it came up suddenly, it went down suddenly. Well, that was just the nature of, not that there was necessarily a blockage, but the nature of having too much too quick. So just wanted to share that as a way to visualize that. Next slide, please. This is the same subdivision, but this is looking at the lot grading plan. And this is pretty typical of subdivisions from the nineties on. And we have these plans available in engineering. And what this shows is in the streets, there's some dark black arrows. That shows the flood routing down the street. And then that dark black arrow also turns a corner and goes through side yards to get to the detention basin. Those are called flood routes. And what that looks like between the homes is in the lower right of the screen that says section A A. That's an engineered flood route that is specifically a foot tall and five foot wide from the center line, three foot bottom and a fifteen foot utility easement. If that flood route gets interrupted because of a fence or because of landscaping or changed in any way, there's a danger to the homes nearby because they can get flooded because that that's designed to safely convey everything that won't fit in the storm sewer to the basin. And, you know, when we design in the manual practice, the requirements are that the storm sewers are designed for a five-year storm and so are the pipes. So quite often in a heavy rain, you're going to overwhelm the inlets or the storm sewer or both. And you're going to have some ponding in the in the street. But then, when it gets to a certain point, it's going to flood route between those homes to the detention basin. And then eventually, when the rain lets up, the inlets will get caught up and the pipes will get caught up and all that water will go away. But like I said, you know, you can design more inlets, design more pipes, but that's more infrastructure to us maintain. And we already struggle with maintaining all the infrastructure we already have. The other thing to note on this lot grading plan is that there's an elliptical bubble with numbers in it. And those numbers represent the finished grade elevation for those homes. And when you have a number above and below, the the above number is for the regular finished grade and the lower number is for the lowest opening elevation. So the whole, the the building sites here that back up to the detention basin, which is at the top of the page, those homes can have what they call a lookout, which is a four foot elevation difference typically between the front and the back that allow for windows to be on the back to let light into the basement. But the engineer of record, the firm that does these plans, they're the ones who figure all this out. They submit it to the city for review. But they're the ones who put together all the calculations to determine what will work and what won't work with the drainage and to make the drainage work safely. The other thing you'll see on this plan is little squiggly lines with arrows on them. And that shows the general drainage for each of the, each of the lots and how it's supposed to safely get from the front yard or backyard to the front yard or from the midpoint of the yard to the back or whatever, each one that that is all figured out by the engineers and planned out ahead. So this is typical of something from the nineties on, older subdivisions in the city, the old parts. There was not something like this. It was more back in that day, a common sense approach that water runs downhill and you want water to get away. You don't necessarily want to create berms that might backwater up on you. Because, you know, I remember when I was a kid, the neighbors to my parents, that they built a house there with a walkout basement that backed up to a drainage way. And the next people that bought it said they were worried about the water backing up from the drainage way into their backyard and flooding their basement. So they they put a burm down there so that the waterway wouldn't come back into their backyard and get their basement. Well, you know, water wants to seek its own level and get away if it can. And so the water that fell on their house filled up their backyard and flooded themselves. And the next couple of days, the burm was removed. And the house has never, never had a problem since. But just remember that, you know, berms can redirect water, they can backwater up and cause unintended consequences where these grading plans are designed to try to get the water away safely to protect the homes. Next slide, please. This is an illustration of what that looks like in just a simple graphic where water should drain away from the houses and then drain through side yard swells, backyard swells to the street. And that's why the streets tend to flood, because everybody's trying to get rid of their water. And typically that goes to the street before flood routes to the ditches. So you can see on the right, there's a lot of ways that you can disrupt the drainage with raised gardens, raised patios, you know, fences that go all the way to the ground that are solid. So there's a lot of ways to mess up the drainage, but a good drainage pattern protects everybody. Next slide, please. This is again the map that you've seen before with the combined sewers, the separated storm and sanitary sewers, the drain tile. Just just a refresher that, you know, the core of the city, the oldest part is the part that has the combined sewers. Next slide, please.
Sorry, nope. The hope with the preceding slides prior to this one was that while there's been a lot of conversation about the combined sewers, and rightfully so, there are a lot of things in this community that can contribute to increased flow into the system, especially during a rain event like that one. That was the purpose of some of the other, the earlier slides. There's I N I, which is a big item in this community. There's also the, when drainage ways are blocked or amended, again, you may not think that that can contribute to increase flow into areas where it's not supposed to go, but it really can. And it becomes a big issue. In addition to, again, as we've talked about, what Kevin is showing now.
So next slide, please. This is a graphic that illustrates by decade annexation of the city. So the core of the city is the light purple. And that's roughly, you know, say eighteen fifty to, you know, nineteen forty-nine, a hundred years, say the first hundred years plus or minus. That's mainly where the combined sewers are. And then the dark purple on with the different colors, those are the different decades of annexations to the city and in general, those are all going to be your separated sewers. And then when you get to your nineteen eighty and beyond, that's the area that typically has detention. So, you know, like I say, combined sewers went away kind of after World War Two, sometime in the fifties. Detention starts coming into play in the eighties. And then, you know, modern lock grading plans in the nineties. So this kind of gives you an idea of the area of the city that has different types of development. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the drainage basins. So one of the things that was talked about or asked about last week was how does drainage work for Bloomington Normal? And so what you see here in red is the boundaries between different drainage basins. And then the blue is the streams, the creeks in the, you know, streams that feed it for that provide the drainage in those drainage basins. And so you can see that Sugar Creek is the main drainage basin for the core of Bloomington and a lot of the east side in town Normal. And then Bloomington is also into the Little Kickapoo, which is kind of in the middle. The Kickapoo, which is to the right, Money Creek is to the north right. And Normal actually gets at the very north end, also gets into the Six Mile Creek watershed, which is Evergreen. But Bloomington is kind of, at least on the east side, at a ridge point where there's a water divide where water can flow one way or the other. And, you know, it's typically at those divides that we see usually some flat terrain. And it's not necessarily low terrain, but very flat and ground that's very flat doesn't drain well. If you have a little bit more slope, drains better. And so some neighborhoods like the East Gate neighborhood is is right there on the ridge divide between Little Kickapoo and Sugar Creek, just tends to be a really flat area, doesn't drain very well or very quickly because of the slopes. You'll also notice in this watershed map that the areas that are not in the urban area tend to have more fingers on the the streams that feed those main blue lines. And you'll look in the middle of Bloomington, there's not a lot of fingers that feed the big blue lines. And the reason is, is that a lot of those fingers were put into a pipe. But that pipe, when it gets full, still the water has to go somewhere. And we'll look at how that works with topology in the next slide. So next slide, please. This is an area of, at the upper left is the south end of downtown. And then at the lower right is is out toward the the bottom is Lincoln Street. And then out to the very far right is Morrissey and the lake at Lakeside Country Club. And you can see here with the the big black and red lines, those are the bigger trunk sewers. And they follow in general the contours and the path that the water would have taken when that used to be a creek. And so what you're seeing there is that that general topography that matches, you know, kind of the the stuff we saw just before, but some of those streams aren't there anymore. And we're getting to another map that kind of illustrates that. Next slide, please. This is a eighteen sixty-seven bird's eye map of Bloomington, really a kind of a neat document. And what we're looking at is a section of Bloomington, we labeled some in the red ellipses, some points of reference where City Hall is library and public service. On this map, Clay Street is now Oakland Avenue. South Grove Street is now MacArthur, so kind of give you some reference of where you're at. But in this eighteen sixty-seven map, you'll see that there's no railroad track yet. The Norfolk Southern Line that's there today wasn't built yet, but there's a creek there. And you can see that there's little bridges that cross the creeks on the main path. And this is important because to understand the drainage, this creek was put into a pipe. Now, you can do that, but any excess water that doesn't fit in the pipe still wants to go where the creek was. And so that's where we saw the flooding by public service along this path, along the railroad tracks. Another thing to note is that, you know, railroads like to be on an even grade because it takes a lot of effort to go off a hill and it takes effort to break when you're going down a hill. Railroads tend to follow the creeks when they can. The creeks are rivers. You'll notice that railroads follow them because they have consistent grade. And so, you know, that that's some little history and background of Bloomington and why things end up the way they do, because that's just how the city was built over the years with taking into account the terrain that's here. Next slide, please. This is a map showing the trunk sewers. The dash lines are not the city sewers, but those are typically binward sewers, they're binward trunk sewers. And then the thickness of the line represents the size of pipe along with the changes in color. And you can see in the system, for the most of Bloomington, is headed towards the West Oakland Plant. The very east side is headed towards the Randolph Plant at the south. But you'll notice that it branches out similar to rivers and streams or even like a tree with branches. So kind of a logical layout where smaller pipes feed bigger pipes, feed bigger pipes, and then eventually get to the treatment plants. Next slide, please. This is PMA claims. You've seen that before, but here's a density version that shows the concentration of PMA claims over the trunk sewers. And you can kind of see from the darker colors that that's where the the heat map is more intense, where more of the claims are. And they follow those trunks. And like I said before, the the trunk, just like the expressway, as it fills up from all the side streets or all the, you know, ramps, so do all the little sewers feed into the bigger sewers, feed to the bigger ones. And all of a sudden, you got congestion where everything is kind of slowed down and and can't take anymore. And so that that's, you know, a correlation between those trunk sewers and in the combined system and the and the claims with the basement backups.
Kevin, can you summarize or speak to, this is a good point, a good place to do it, why people have complained about the sewage that ended up in their basement? So can you, a lot of this is related to that. Can you summarize or clearly what, why that could have happened with the amount of rain that we had in the short amount of time?
Yeah. So with the combined sewers, you know, the normal sewage flow from flushing toilets and other discharges from homes doing laundry or whatever, really doesn't fill the pipe up very full at all, the that huge capacity, like I said, that that eight foot diameter pipe that goes by the library. Those were built as as ways to handle serious runoff when you have a big storms. And obviously, there comes a limit of how big do you make the pipe, how much of a storm can you handle? So when that is exceeded, just like I said, with the with the vehicles, now it has to go somewhere and it will seek its own level. And so the sewers become what we call surcharge, where the pipe is full and beyond full. And now in that condition, it seeks its own level, which may be somebody's basement. And it will fill up those basements to whatever ever level it's surcharged. And it can do, you know, damage to a whole block's worth or just one end where the homes are lower and that type of thing. But water wants to seek its own level, and so it finds it in people's basements, unfortunately, with the combined sewers when you get that much water coming into the system. Next slide, please. This is the system map with the EMA Emergency Management Agency data that McLean County collected. This shows addresses that had some sort of Uh, this shows addresses that had some sort of flood damage. And one of the things to note here is that, yeah, there's a lot of dots in the combined sewer area. But you'll also see that there's a lot of dots on the east side and southwest side where the sewers are separated. So, that's why we're talking to you tonight. It's not just about combined sewers, it's about the level of rain we got and how all our systems work. Whether it's combined sewers, whether it's separate sewers, there's still flooding issues. That's why we're talking about lock grading and proper drainage. Because some of these things, you know, if, if the proper drainage is in place and not blocked, should have worked okay. So, just to show, it's, it's not isolated to one area of the city, it's, it's pretty much all over. Another slide that illustrates that. Next slide, please. This is, um, data that was collected by interns, uh, prior to the bulk pickup. Just because an area of the city doesn't show any dots, doesn't mean there wasn't anything there, it just means that for that day. Our interns may not have gotten through that route before the crews got there to pick it up. But you can see that the bulk pickup that was done following the storm event. Uh, was, was throughout the city, it's not just in the combined sewer area, it's just, it, it's really throughout the city. Next slide, please. This slide shows people that, addresses that dropped off at the CCC, the Citizens Convenience Center. So, they brought in bulk to drop it off. And once again, you can see that this is across the city as well. So, you know, whether it was, uh, people on the east side that had a problem with the sump pump failure or sump pump overwhelmed. Or maybe water came through a window well, whatever that was, there was damage, not just in one part of the city, but across the entire city. Next slide, please. Want to talk about, uh, ongoing work, um, in, in different ways, shapes and forms. So, next slide, please. Detention basins, brought this up before, but they do make a difference. And, uh, the city started with detention basins really in earnest in the nineteen eighties. Today, there are three hundred ninety-seven private basins and seventy-seven public basins. Working together, they form a, a system that reduces flooding impacts downstream. In that map, there's a whole bunch of small dots, you, some of them you can see, some of them you can't. That represent all those almost four hundred and seventy-five basins there. A big deal. Next slide. So, here's an example of a basin, the Baker Ash Basin, just south of Lincoln Street. And, uh, in this case, uh, on the upper left is a zoomed out picture. On the, uh, lower left is, is a zoomed in picture showing the debris line, uh, right by some bushes there. And, and what you'll note there is the debris line represents the high watermark, which is not, which shows that it wasn't completely full. So, in, in this particular case, there may be an opportunity here. That with some hydraulic analysis and a, in a modeling situation, maybe there's a way to utilize this basin. To its capacity, because you would expect with this level of rain, that the basin probably would have filled up to its top and maybe spilled over. So, this is just to illustrate that the reason we went around and collected data. Was to see where are there opportunities possibly to look at for improvements? Because utilizing this basin to its full extent in this sewer shed would have helped the people downstream by gridling Oakland. So, next slide, please. This is another basin, this is the Fox Creek Pepper Ridge Basin. And what's noteworthy about this one is it overflowed. So, in the upper left, you can see in the red ellipse, there's a debris line right there. And that concrete in the background that you see, that's actually the concrete to protect the spillway. So, when the, uh, basin gets completely full, it runs over that concrete and on down. But that concrete's there to keep it from eroding away. And you can see in the lower left, the aerial shot from the drone shows that the grass is all matted down where the water ran down that. Uh, on the other side of the embankment. And then that, that box references you back to, uh, an area in the lower right. To give you an idea how big this basin is, that's where that spillway is, all the way in the back, and you can see the houses on the right. And then flipping the drone around, looking the other way, uh, is the upper right picture. So, this is an enormous basin. And, you know, it filled up, the homes that are there, uh, normally would look out on a big empty, uh, area of, of grass, green. But that, that night, if they could have seen, they would have seen a giant lake and they're basically right behind their backyards. So, this is a, a situation where the basin worked this design, we would have expected it to fill up and overflow with this type of event. And it did, but it had a big impact to downstream properties because it regulated the water. You know, by detaining it and keeping it from flooding, making the, the flooding worse for downstream property. Next slide, please. Here are some, uh, debris lines along creeks. So, the upper left is, uh, Arcadia Broadmore Ditch, and there's two debris lines there, we highlighted it for you with, uh, the blue lines. And with each different storm event, you know, there's a high watermark that leaves, uh, grasses and twigs and what have you. At, at however high the water got. So, this one, you know, stayed well within the ditch. And then on the right, you see a view of Sugar Creek. And this is, uh, from around Fell, looking to the northwest. You can see Advocate Roman Hospital on the upper right. You can see to the left is the IW, IW Athletic Fields. And then you can see there's actually three debris lines here. And the highest of the debris lines was near the top of bank, but didn't actually get over the bank. And what that relates to then is the lower left image is of the FEMA flood plains. So, what you see there in the red, w- with the hatching, with the hatch red is the, uh, the floodway. And then the flood plain, the hundred year and the five hundred year is, uh, light, light brown. So, if the detention basins hadn't been built on the east side of Bloomington, we undoubtedly would have seen. You know, IW and other properties inundated by floodwater. In this case, this is a success story that here, the Sugar Creek stayed within its banks. Now, we know further to the west, as you get by Main Street, it did come out of its banks there. But that's a different situation, we believe, is related to the railroad culvert that has too small of an opening to get through. But here, where we've done improvements with infrastructure for new bridges at Fell and Clinton, everything worked very well. So, a success story here, I think. Next slide, please. This is from the, uh, twenty fourteen Sewer and Stormwater Master Plan. This is showing a graphic of an area that was studied with hydraulic model. And, and the illustration here is that when you look at the sewer sheds or the watersheds, they're not necessarily one in the same. Because with piping underground, it can be, um, you know, slightly different. And so, this illustrates breaking those, uh, areas down and what goes into hydraulic modeling. Next slide, please. This modeling effort was part of a, a technical study that was done. And, uh, in this case, uh, Pond One is near the public service facility. Pond Two is the NICOR remediation site. And the green line represents a proposed path for a storm sewer that could follow Constitution Trail. Basically, under Constitution Trail to get from downtown area to the west side. One of the challenges in the built up urban environment is that anytime you want to add new infrastructure, it's very costly and difficult. Because there's already a lot of stuff in the streets. And, and, uh, finding a path for any more pipes can be a real challenge. But there's an opportunity here because, you know, Constitution Trail is a clear path that the city owns. And, you know, there's some fiber optic near it, but really nothing else under it. So, and like I said, the, the railroads always tried to follow a consistent grade. So, this gives a, a path that could be used to convey storm water that would be separated potentially out. Because that's always the challenge is if you, if, even if you want to separate sewers, you have to have a place for the storm water to go to. So, this was something that was, um, modeled in, in the Sewer and Stormwater Master Plan. Would probably need to be updated to make sure everything is, uh, modeled correctly, but just, uh, a possibility. Um, next slide, please. The impact of that system, based on the modeling they did, is shown in these graphs. So, the, uh, blue line is a hydrograph from without the basins, the red line is with. And, and one shows, uh, a minimal area and the other shows an expanded drainage area. Huge impacts on the peak flows. And the peak flows is what really impacts our community in terms of overwhelming the sewer system. So, um, huge benefits here potentially.
Kevin, so are we saying that the pursuit potentially of those two basins can help to reduce some of the back, backup? That, that we see with?
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
That's correct, yeah. Cause the notion here is that if you can get water to a safe place to store it for a while and then release it slowly. You minimize that impact of the sudden surge of water that is either flooding basements because the pipe's too full. Or surface flooding because the pipe's too full again and doesn't have any place to go. So, that's where that illustration with the detention basins on the newer parts of Bloomington. And what happened with our flood plains and Sugar Creek tells a powerful story that they make a difference. So. Next slide, please. This you saw last week, um, phasing map for Locust Colton. Phase one, six and seven has been complete, two is under construction. And then three, the design is, uh, complete, and we heard that we're on the list to be funded. Four, the design has just started. We looked at this last week that there's an opportunity that five could be maybe combined with four and delivered quicker. And we'll get to a slide that shows that, but just wanted to re- remind everybody of that. Next slide, please. The, uh, capital projects for the five-year budget for sewer and storm, this is what's currently programmed. And we've got all five years here. A lot of the projects are related to Locust Colton. Uh, there's also for the sewer, the sewer assessment, the multi-year sanitary sewer assessment, four hundred thousand. That's principally CCTV work. If you remember, we did a really big contract, uh, just a year ago, and we're still wrapping that up. But with that contract, we're to somewhere over seventy percent of the sewers televised now in the combined and sanitary systems. But we still need to continue moving forward to get them all done. And then at the time we get them all done, we need to be, we want to be able to assess those sewers at least once every ten years. Is, is that where we need the level of funding to continue that multi-year assessment? And then you'll see that the multi-year sanitary sewer rehabilitation at one point seven five million. That is to fix problems that have been identified with the CCTV, whether it be point repairs or lining or other things. We're looking forward to doing that type of work every year going forward. And right now, just from what the assessments have been done, we have enough work to, uh, keep us busy for at least five years. With all the, uh, you know, lining and, and rep- point repair issues have already been discovered. Then we also have, um, some sewers that are streets that don't have a public sewer. These are streets that have some sort of private sewer laterals that are two or three on one or whatever. And run down somewhere and tie into a public sewer. These people have public sewer or their, their, you know, sewage flows to a public sewer, we just don't know how, and they don't know how. And so, the idea here is to provide a public sewer on these streets that people can connect to. When their, you know, two or three or four on one sewers that run through people's backyards or wherever fail or have problems. And then, um, Sugar Creek Forest Man Improvements is a project that's moving forward. And, and, uh, we'll look at the other years here real quick, I know I'm getting down to the end, but let's go next slide. Um, once again, more, um, CSO work and the assessments. But here, we also have some stuff for the, the Maze Field CSO, trying to look at, to eliminate that ultimately. Next slide, please. Once again, very similar, um, we're focused on CSO projects and the assessments and the rehabilitation. Next slide, please. Twenty-five, uh, FY twenty-five, main, mainly the same type of story. And then twenty-six, please, or next slide, please, and twenty-six. Um, we're kinda to a point where, um, where the, the, the funds are in such a place that we, we didn't have a lot of other work program for these years. And then the next slide shows the overall summary for the five years. So, for the sewer fund, just under nineteen million. And, uh, for the storm fund, just under five point five million. Um, a significant amount of work over the next five years, but always more that could be done. Next slide, please. So, what, what have we been doing? Um, you know, sewer and stormwater maintenance and assessment. Our crews, um, are busy, whether it's our public service crews or whether it's contractors. Doing emergency cave-in repairs, cleaning sewers, performing smoke and dye testing, televising, evaluating, uh, SCADA improvements. Lining sewers, installing sump pump drain lines, um, the list goes on, you can read them all. But a huge amount of work that we're doing with, uh, the money that's in these enterprise funds to, 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 uh, maintain and improve our system. Next slide, please. What can be done moving forward? Next slide, please. So, for, uh, residents, you know, preventing sewer backups, um, there's also backup issues when sewer laterals. Private sewer laterals get blocked. These are examples of sewers that have had, uh, for instance, tree roots blocking the flow. Um, it's important to look at televising and cleaning those periodically and especially prior to, uh, purchase of a house. Next slide, please. For properties that are served by com- combined sewers, an option is the overhead sewer program. The city will provide up to forty-five hundred dollars, uh, per eligible home, single family home. We currently budget it forty thousand a year, that could be increased. But the reason it got to that level was because there wasn't a lot of demand the last few years. Another option for homeowners is, uh, sewer backflow preventer. Um, and some people have those. Uh, we, we as a, a city kinda prefer the overhead sewer program. Because, um, it, it also, um, you know, is able to be, the sewers are able to be used even when the combined sewers are surcharged. So. Next slide, please. Some helpful hints, this is, uh, for homeowners to, you know, keep service lines clean, good repair. Remove obstructions for side yard, backyard swells, flood routes. Private lock grading in low isolated areas is kind of an issue. The, uh, there's been cases where people's backyards flood. Uh, and this is older parts of the city don't necessarily have a, a lock grading plan, but those are, are really private drainage issues. Like I say, most, uh, subdivisions built after nineteen ninety have a lock grading plan. And people can contact the Public Works Engineering Division. And, uh, we're, we'll be happy to share that information with them for their property. And then make sure downspouts point away from the foundation, gutters are clean, downspouts clean. And that, uh, you know, driveway sidewalks, patios, they can settle over time, make sure they're sloped away from the foundation if they're not. Um, try to get them corrected. Next slide, please. Some other helpful hints with window wells, sometimes they settle over time, make sure that they're the right elevation, windows are free, window wells free from debris. And consider putting covers over them to keep rain and debris out. And then sump pumps, um, where we have sump pump drain lines, connect to them. Uh, it helps to, uh, keep the yard drier and prevent, uh, you know, ice and buildup in, in different areas in the winter. And then, you know, sump pumps gutter discharges, city code says they have to be fifteen feet away from front or rear property lines. Um, and then connecting sanity, or sump pumps to sanitary sewers is prohibited. Some other helpful hints, uh, you know, for those that, um, would like to know when their, when water's in the basement. There's cheap battery powered alarms that like ten bucks you can get. They emit a sound like a smoke detector or whatever, that's pretty loud and obnoxious. Um, there's also ones that are smart that can be, uh, send texts or emails and notify you on your smartphone or whatever. And then a green alternative, um, rain barrels, I mean, even though they wouldn't necessarily help solve the problem with the, um. You know, with the, uh, amount of rain we got, nonetheless, it's a green solution that can help with runoff. Next slide, please. Um, some helpful hints with insurance. Your homeowner's insurance, uh, unless you have special coverages, you know, for flood coverage, sewer backup coverage, sump pump coverage. Those are all different riders that, um, need to be added to policies in order to cover those things. Um, there's also sewer lateral coverage that can be through the city or through private options. Next slide, please. For um, the city to consider some uh, code review amendments potentially to get sheds and fences out of swales. Or to disallow swimming, boating, gardening, gardens, boat docks. Fire pits, et cetera, from public detention basins or other drainage ways, these are issues that we actually have. Uh, add add requirement for homes to be inspected for proper plumbing connections when a home is sold. So that the sump pump downspouts footing piles are not connected into the sanitary sewer. Some additional considerations uh, would be for hydraulic modeling of select sewer sheds. Um, ideally, we would have a hydraulic model for the whole city, but it takes time to get that, but. There's some that are more important than others to help solve some of the um, you know, flooding issues. And then based on the modeling, consider additional capital projects. And then uh, funding of the capital projects, uh, we can pay cash or by EPA low interest loans or general obligation. But then um, you know, we may have to reevaluate the sewer and stormwater rates to adequately support these additional capital projects. Next slide please. Future possibilities, next slide. Uh, we saw this last week, uh, accelerated timeframe possibly for Locust Colton CSO elimination to. Combine phases four and five and then move phases eight and nine up a little bit, potentially here. Um, you know, we could cut off, you know, up to four years off the schedule for completion. Next slide please. This would be a kind of a sketch or a idea of what a basin might look like at the Nycor site for detention. Uh, we just need to pursue that with uh, Nycor and and move that uh, option forward if that's what we want to do as a city. Uh, but their Nycor remediation site there, they're planning to remove all the soil and replace it with clean fill. And the uh, soil will be removed to depths of thirty and thirty, twenty-five to thirty-five feet. So they're gonna dig a big hole and then fill it back in. Why not take advantage of the opportunity with large hole to create a basin there that could help with uh, you know, flood control. Next slide please. That other basin, the the pond one could uh, be at the uh, Public Works Yards. Uh, on uh, E Street, just south of the City Hall Library. That's where flooded, that's where the water wants to go, that's where the creek was, uh, natural spot for it. And then um, next slide, green infrastructure. Uh, green infrastructure helps with water quality and uh, it is is good in general, but when you get to events this big. Um, it doesn't necessarily help because the waters, the ground's already saturated, the water can't get anymore, it runs off. Those green infrastructure things like Tipton Trails or The Grove. Both of those were big lakes underwater, so during normal events, they help with water quality and these big events, they. They kind of, they do their job as a big detention basin. So just having permeable pavement doesn't necessarily solve anything with flooding, it can help with water quality. So, you know, but there's other issues then that come into play with when ground is saturated, it's less cohesive. Puts additional pressure on foundations as well as the higher water table and then sump pumps can run more often, sometimes for days or even weeks, so. Pros and cons with that. Next slide please, potential next steps. Uh, this is for your consideration, expedite the Locust Colton CSO elimination schedule, increase funding for the overhead sewer program. Perform a additional hydraulic modeling of select storm is sewer sheds, evaluate projects that result coming out of the hydraulic modeling. Initiate formal discussions with Nycor regarding detention at the remediation site. Evaluate the facility relocation of public works near in detention near downtown, review and update city code and. Evaluate funding sources and rate structure, so this is the last slide for questions and answers, I'll just leave this one up for your consideration. Thank you, I apologize for going over a little bit, but lot to cover in short time.
Kevin, uh, before we turn this back over to the mayor and uh, council for uh, follow-up questions regarding the uh, overhead sewer program. Uh, forty-five hundred dollars is the city's portion uh, that we have set aside. Uh, and I know that we have talked uh, tonight and in previous council meetings about possibly expanding this program. What is the typical total cost for this to uh, be put in any uh, given average home?
Yeah, um, great question, city manager. Um, you know, the the forty-five hundred is really to cover the cost of the plumbing and the pump and stuff like that. Other incidentals, whether it be uh, floor coverings or wall coverings or that type of thing aren't covered. Uh, in our forty-five hundred dollar grant program, so um, the total cost can vary, it it also. The sewer service needs to be in good shape before the this goes in, so sometimes there's rehabilitation for the sewer service. Tony Brown would be a better person to answer that question, I'm I'm gonna say that we're probably more like in the ten thousand range typically for this, so.
And and that was the number that uh, was my understanding, uh, and I realized that it could vary. But as council considers the next steps of uh, investing more in this program. I think uh, to this point, we have maybe four or five applications uh, under the current program. Uh, maybe the uh, possibility to increase uh, the amount that's funded. Uh, and the overall amount uh, that's in the uh, program. Something else that you mentioned was the detention basins, uh, is the area behind uh, City Hall. The Public Works Campus is what I call it, is that an area that's been identified as an ideal location for a detention basin?
It it is city manager, the uh, a- as we know that. Uh, you know, garage area flooded to a little over a foot deep in this last storm. Water wants to be there, um, it was identified in the sewer and stormwater master plan as a a good spot. For detention basin, just because it's kind of a natural spot.
And the last thing that I'll share uh, with council related to uh, this conversation is what has staff done uh, in reaching out to the state. And this includes some of the elected officials uh, having assisted with this as well. Uh, we're exploring if there's any possibilities with additional CDBG funding. Uh, something uh, above and beyond what the city's already been awarded. Also, when we talk, and I said this last week, uh, at the council meeting, when we talk about. Trying to uh, expedite or repurpose uh, the Locust Colton project and try to shorten that timeframe. That we complete the project. Uh, is it possible to receive a larger portion of the IEPA funds that are given out in any given year? But is uh, this, is it possible for the city of Bloomington to receive a larger portion? So that we can make this uh, repurposed uh, construction. Uh, in a shorter period under those very favorable interest rates. Of around one point one, one point two percent versus going out to the uh, open market for like a general obligation bond. Uh, other things that uh, we are exploring is uh, grants uh, that we have our local legislators. We have two state senators that represent the community, we have uh, two uh, state representatives. And probably a conversation that no one recalls, uh, but uh, there was over a million dollars that uh, is in the current state budget. That's appropriated through our local state uh, representatives. For different types of projects in the city of Bloomington, while it's a process and while there are no guarantees. Uh, we're having those conversations if we would be allowed to repurpose those if council chooses. To use those for any of the uh, possibilities that the Public Works Director was sharing. So those things are in play currently. I know the mayor's been very involved, other elected officials here at the Dais have had those conversations. I have definitely at the staff level using uh, Julie Curry, our lobbyist. Uh, but uh, of the uh, state uh, elected, Dan Brady's been very engaged, uh, Jason Barrickman and Senator Sally Turner. I have been very engaged as well, and I know we're over on time, but uh, deputy city manager, anything before we come back to the mayor and council?
And thank you, in speaking to the the expediting of Locust Colton. Um, if that's something that the council chooses to pursue, Kevin, um, for a dollar figure of about six point nine million dollars. The schedule of substantial completion gets reduced from, looks like late. Twenty twenty-five to late twenty twenty-three, I just think it's worth stating that, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, uh, Kevin and and staff for uh, a very informative uh, presentation. Uh, thank you, city manager Gleason, also for the additional details. Um, what I would say is that you you have provided us with a a number of different potential next steps. Uh, but I uh, from my perspective and and I think I can speak for the council is that we. You know, there's definitely a desire to expedite things uh, as fast as possible, so the the sooner. We have something uh, more concrete uh, a plan with dollar figures uh, associated. Uh, to it, I think the 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 better off we're we're going to be, so thank you very much and with that I will turn it over to. Uh, council members, if I could ask, uh, it's been requested of me that you you speak into the microphone fairly loudly. So that you can be heard by everyone in the room, but also uh, on online as well. So let's go with a council member, Ward.
Okay, I hope everybody can hear me, cause last time I was having some problems. Um, I have a number of questions, thanks for the presentation, it it was very useful to me to hear that and it was, it was also really. Helpful to generate some more questions, so um. At some point, somebody mentioned that Gibson City has handled the separation of sewers recently. Um, what can we learn from that? What can we learn from other cities who are going through this? Because surely of the seven hundred plus cities that I think you mentioned last meeting. Around the country that have been dealing with this problem, there's some other wisdom out there about how we can handle this.
Separating the sewers can help, but it's not the entire answer, so. In the case of Gibson City, they said it would have been worse if they hadn't separated, but it was still pretty bad. When you look at the number of people that had to be rescued in the basement flooding, so that's where in the presentation, I don't want to be clear that. That may be part of a solution, but it's not the entire.
Sure, that's not, that's not quite my question, I'm just, I understand it's a, it's a years-long process to separate the sewers. We have eighty-five miles worth of sewers to separate in the city. Millions and gajillions of dollars to do that. How is it that places like Gibson City have managed to resolve their issues? That's my, with regard to separating the sewers, that's the question I'm asking.
Right, but I thi- I I think part of the answer is is that it didn't solve the flooding problem for them and they still had the sewer backup. They probably got loans from EPA.
They probably got loans from EPA.
Yes.
Okay, so that that's helped.
And and we're doing that too, I mean.
Okay. Um. On the annexation year overlay slide, I don't know if it's possible to show that one again. But it, if I understood correctly, um, it seemed like you were saying that 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 slide showed. Is some concentrated areas of of claims and damages. It, am I misunderstanding what that slide showed?
That wasn't the annexation slide, that was another slide, just uh, I think after that, but. Uh, I think we could probably flip back toward to it.
Okay. Could you? The reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking while you're waiting on that is it seemed like that indicated where the the most. Damage seems to have happened. And yet it wasn't the area that received the most rainfall based on what you had said earlier, and so I'm curious. Since that is in the combined sewer area and did see the most damage. What the reason for that was if they didn't receive the most rainfall?
Yeah.
So it was probably the slide right before this.
Yeah, it's actually slide twenty-one. Um, the 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 answer to that is.
That one.
Right, well, when we look at the sewer shed and the watershed, the area that got the most rain flows through this area. So that's why, this is downstream of that area that got the really heavy rain. So everything flows downstream. If that makes sense.
It does, except that I I guess what I'm trying to get my head around is the idea that it's not caused by the amount of rain. That's what I keep hearing you say, except that the areas of the city that had the most rain don't seem to have had the most damage. So is it the rain or is it something else that's causing the damage?
Right, the rain has to flow somewhere, right, it has, it wants to go downstream, this is downstream.
Right. So it's, it's really not the rain, it's the downstream part, something about the downstream is unique there.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's the amount of rain in that short amount of time that's flowing downstream all at once.
Just to interject real quick, Kevin, would it also be say, to say, looking at the map that a lot of the um. The really bad areas or for the concentrated rain would have come off the downtown hill too. It would flow east, west uh, to the one dark spot and south of the other dark spot is kind of what I'm looking at too.
Right, and 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 historically, the bad flooding is always the downstream part as far as the concentrated flows. You know, there's, there's, there's during a storm event, there's different types of flooding that occur. Some occur, you know, from the heavy rain directly impacting homes from the outside. And then the concentrated flows as they concentrate more and more, you know, that's why like a a river city like a Peoria. You know, the hundred year rain and the hundred year flood are two different things and the flood that comes to Peoria comes from somewhere up north. You know, and that slug of water's coming through Peoria and they can predict days in advance what the river's gonna crest at. In this case, this timeframe's much shorter, but still that level of water that came from upstream is going downstream. And it's flowing through this area, and so that that rain that fell in another part of Bloomington impacts the other parts of Bloomington too.
But not in the same way.
Well, in in different ways, there's different types of flooding that, you know, we try to. Show tonight that it's not just simply a basement backup from a combined sewer, there's other types of flooding that occurred. That night, depending on where you were and the circumstances involved.
But the sewage was concentrated in these purple dots.
There there was, there was more PMA claims in that area. Now, some of the other flooding didn't result in as many PMA claims for whatever reason, I mean, we saw, you know, from the EMA damage slide. Across the city, much more reported damage from flood, but not everybody filed a PMA claim.
You've talked about the basin for the the retention basin. You've talked about the te- retention basin for the Nycor property.
Yes.
Um. Who would that have a positive impact for? What neighborhoods would would be helped by having that retention basin? Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so that that same path that you were just talking about with the dark purple. You know, that that area is going to be impacted by the two basins and the storm sewer. Because if you can take that load off the co- comb- combination sewer, the storm load. And get it to basins and get it safely downstream, you're having a positive influence on all that purple area.
This purple area behind me.
Yes.
Okay. And the the money that's being spent currently on lining and repair issues. Um, for rehabilitation of sewers, is that of having any impact at all on combined sewers?
It 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 includes lining of combined sewers and repairs to them as well, I mean, it's across the city with. And 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 typically your older sewers are the ones that need more attention with repairs and lining, so.
So would would separating the sewers reduce the need for that?
No, the 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 pipes, the assets we have in the ground, we still want to be able to maintain them in a safe operating condition. So whether we separate the sewers or not, like in the case of Locust Colton. As we look at those sewers and build a new, say sanitary sewer, because we already have a big pipe that's big enough for storm. A lot of times we'll line the storm sewer to make sure that it can be serviced for another hundred years or whatever that is. Just by maintaining that in a in a good condition.
And so can you also um, explain to the folks here? As clearly as you explained to me at one point, why you prefer the overhead sewers as opposed to the um, the check valves?
The 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 check valve is a less costly solution, but the issue becomes. but the issue becomes unless you're able to look at the valve and know that it's closed or open, you don't know whether you can use the sewers in your house. Because when the water comes up in the combined sewer, it would in theory close the check valve. But then at that point, any any water or sewage that you generate in your house from upstairs is going to flood you in your basement because it can't get out.
And why doesn't the overhead sewer do that?
On the overhead sewer, because there's a pump in the basement, everything upstairs, gravity flows out high. The stuff that's in the basement gets pumped up and it's at such an elevation that even if the sewer service gets a backup, the sewer connection to the house is much higher than that. And therefore you don't get the backup in the house. And you can still use the sewers even in a big storm without having to worry about getting a backup in your basement.
But ideally, that's done block by block, not individual house by house, because it could have an impact on your neighbor's house if you do it just house by house.
Yeah, and but the the overhead sewer program is a house by house situation. Ideally, you know, everybody in that block would do it.
Well, it's structured as an as a house by house thing right now.
Right.
Okay.
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, council member Montney, and I just want to mention, I probably should have said that ahead of time, but I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask your questions. So maybe you can ask a couple of questions and then we can circle back to the other person afterwards. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. That was very educational. And there's a lot of material out there on your website and I really appreciate having learned from it. Year over year, as I've looked back at your reports, your department has done a nice job of advising at budget time, year after year, that loans are not available, that costs exceed revenues, that there is not a sufficient money for proper maintenance and repair. And you're though a recipient of funding from councils, this one and prior councils. Obviously, you don't have the opportunity to self fund. I think it was noted in your documents that emergency repairs, reactive repairs, 2,455 feet, $55 per foot, but for proactive planned work, $133 a foot, which is certainly a difference. There was also a comment in your notes that degradation remains unseen until a failure occurs, which explains the lack of public support for investment in something that is needed that can't be observed. But here we are now, obviously, we've had the opportunity to observe the value of these infrastructures and the importance to our community as a whole. And earlier this summer, when we became aware of the COVID relief funds, the Department of the Treasury issued 39 pages laying out permitted uses for these funds for state and local governments for permitted uses, three of which were specifically related to the COVID-19. The fourth, however, allows for investment in our infrastructure, specifically upgrading aging sewer infrastructures is a permitted use. The timing is remarkable. So I just wanted to reflect upon the opportunities that you've laid out, separating not only executing the whole Locust Colton project, but also I believe, as you talked to us last week, the secondary benefits that that would have to all of the neighborhoods by not persistently flooding into, as you laid out, you know, the gravity which would take this over to the many poignant stories that we've heard in our West Side neighborhoods. So with that, Kevin, I just wanted to let you know that you would have my support for us to turn this relief honey that we have been blessed with with an exact permitted use that is this fact set we're dealing with to address this problem for our community so that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Councilmember Montney. Councilmember Becker.
So I agree 100% with what Sheila said, and I want to step back from the making of the sausage, so to speak, for a second, Kevin, and just cut to the chase. If we take your list of recommended things and Deputy Tyus stated this before, he said to do the additional acceleration was 6.9 additional million. If we do the two retention ponds, we do the additional acceleration and the other things that you deem are going to give the most impact, what's the dollar amount you need? Plain and simple. What's that number? Because if we use the the money that Sheila mentioned and what additional, I want to know how much we'd need to know to give you what you need.
Great question, Alderman Becker, and I don't have that answer for you tonight. Yeah, I'm sorry, but there there is a number in the sewer and stormwater master plan, but it's out of date and it would need to be adjusted for today's dollars. So that's certainly something that we can, you know, put together.
As people can probably see, even with the mask, that answer does disappoint me because these guys and all the citizens have been waiting for five weeks for that answer. We can't vote on it until we get that number and we really need that number. We want to give you the money. I think fairly unanimously, we want to help you. But we need that number.
Yeah. Real quick, if I can jump in here. Kevin, I mean, this has been a conversation that we have had. You know, we sort of take two paths here. One, you know, trying to provide a defense to the city that we're not liable, you know, but it's not suggesting that we don't want the improvements to the system that we've got, any infrastructure that we have as a city. I'm not going to cast any disparaging comments against past councils because I don't know what the decisions were that they made five, 10, 20, 30 years ago. I just know that I have got to put this council on the firmest ground when they're making decisions going forward. And and what does come next? You know, Kevin, you know, and I'm going to preface this, you know, I'm going to say, do not hold us to this number. But can you comment Alderman Becker's question and give an estimate that is not an etched in stone, perfect estimate? If this is going to be the pathway that council gives us direction or marching orders? Because that's what we're looking for as staff as well, these marching orders on what to do next. Can you ballpark a number?
I'm going to reference my team here real quick, if you don't mind. Sorry, kind of put on the spot here. We have the numbers, obviously, in those slides from the Locust Colton and accelerating those phases. The other the other projects to do the hydraulic modeling, the, you know, two ponds and the storm sewer. I want to say from the master plan, it was somewhere around 5 million for that pond, one pond, two and stuff. But like I say, we would want to update those numbers and and, you know, the hydraulic modeling, you know, we could be talking, you know, several hundred thousand to update that stuff.
So seven plus six is 13 ballpark. Is that what I'm hearing?
In in general, and please don't hold me to those numbers because we're, you know, we need some time to flush those out for good, but just ballpark.
Let's let's say 13.6, Sheila.
Okay, Councilmember Amy.
Thank you. You said something that I wrote down, Kevin. A good drainage pattern protects everybody. Like, I think you said that more than than once. And so just to to clarify what Alderwoman Ward was asking, the the reason why residents experienced, say, a differential in in observable rainfall and an experience of flooding is because there was so much water, it had an impact on our systems across the board. And what we're seeing is that water wants to be at its level, right? That it it the resulting flooding happened because the water flowed down, so to speak. And if that's if that's is that, am I getting that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And if if that's the case, and maybe you can't respond now, but but what would be the priorities of the this various ways that we could vote to fund to redress these these problems with the infrastructure? Like, like what? And I know you're not a, you can't predict exactly the future in the way that Gibson City separated sewers and they had flooding and we understand that. But but what would make the most difference, right? So would it would it be creating these water basins? Would it be accelerating the Locust Colton funding, which, you know, I want to weigh everything in tandem? Mr. Taya said that we would we would buy what, two years if we accelerated? Right? The Locust Colton separation project, like we would finish two years earlier than than what we already have planned. So is is that is that where we should focus? Our our investment, is that where we should go first?
Yeah, good question, Alderman Amy. And I think part of that answer is, you know, the Locust Colton is already in process. Obviously, not everything's designed yet, but we have a good idea of what the costs are moving forward with that. The part we don't have such a good idea on is really the rest of the city. So the sewer and stormwater master plan did some modeling of different areas of the city, came up with that, you know, like the the two ponds, the two detention basins with the storm sewer would be a good idea and have a positive benefit. From that early modeling, what we really need to do in my estimation is to move forward with additional modeling to say, you know, we know what the storm input was from this last storm. You put that into the hydraulic model and you see how the, you know, the system responds with these improvements and then you tweak it. And through that process, then you get to a solution that should work for these different levels of storm. And and that that preliminary engineering work is so vitally important because if you don't do it, you really don't know the benefits, the full benefits of what you're accomplishing. Because like I say, just just doing the separation can help to a degree, but it still doesn't solve all the flooding issues. And we know from other, you know, cities such as Champaign, you know, they had issues with flooding along the along the Boneyard. They did a big project a few years ago called the John Street Basin. It's had a real positive influence in an older part of the community with flooding. And I think that the basins that we're talking about could have that impact. There's a potential that there's other locations that maybe some basins would have a positive impact as well. Another site might be the old rail yard. There's flooding up there in the northern part of Bloomington, along North Madison Street and some other ones. Perhaps a basin up there strategically placed could help. That's not been modeled. So there's that. That's when we said in the slide presentation, you know, we'd like to do some select watersheds or sewer sheds to model them to see what can we do to help those in particular. And then, of course, over over time, I'd love to have a good model of the whole city. We have one for the water distribution system, but we don't have it for the sewer and stormwater systems. And, you know, back when I started my career at the city, it would have taken a cray supercomputer to try to run this stuff. And now the desktop computers and the software are so advanced that they can give us really good information. It's just getting good data and getting a getting a good model to get good results. And so I really think the the big, big focus needs to be modeling to figure out the next steps for other parts of the city.
Because it it does occur then to me that if you if we are able to, say, create these basins and keep this surge of storm water from entering our aged sewers, then we wouldn't have sewage backing up in basements, even in a large rain event, if if our basins are doing what we intend for them to do. So I guess I would just want to say, instead of let's let's do it all, just spend, you know, let's let's prioritize. Let's determine what makes the most sense and and do so as quickly as possible so that that we can actually implement some of this infrastructure work going forward. I think that's really important. And just just a final comment, this this conversation about infrastructure is exceedingly important. But it's it's separate, it's just separate from also considering ways that we might be positioned to provide assistance to our residents who experience significant damage and have little means. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowden.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, for the report and all. Could you move your microphone so that you? I was having trouble hearing. For the general public and correct me if I'm wrong, up until this point, sewer funding is from the Enterprise Fund, which is basically taken from the water bill, correct?
That's correct.
And pretty much everybody pays their fair share because it's based on usage.
Correct.
Okay. And the funds that are basically in reserves, like the reserve balance has to stay in the sewer fund, correct?
Correct.
For the major projects that are coming down the road. And for stormwater only, it covers the the storm sewers, the underground storm sewers, the stream, erosion, the detention basins, and the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District. Because some of the storm water goes down and gets processed in that plant, correct?
That that's only with the combination sewers. The separated storm sewers don't go to the bin where they go right past them in Shurrock Creek.
Well, I guess my point is, is that that little portion of our water bill, okay, sewer Bloomington.
Oh, that one. There's a binward charge on there that's for binward sewer, the treating the wastewater. So the the city operate.
Well, my, you know, my point is, it's not a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I do think that, like Sheila said, and Nick and and Julie, we really need to focus on the infrastructure. We need to get it finished as best as possible. You are the smartest person in the room as far as engineering goes and public works. And I would like you to present your recommendations for how to take care of that downstream thing. And you mentioned the downtown detention basin. Is that where that old meatpacking plant is?
That that's part of it.
Okay. The only question I have about that is, I guess, round underground, if there's any EPA issue? I mean, I'm just going to throw that out there, but I'm sure you'll find out and you'll know what the deal is. And this is just an FYI, occasionally I've had the sewers cleaned out in my neighborhood where they come and do pressurized clean out. And they recommend that you cover your basement drain and put a towel over your toilet seat so that water doesn't come back in. So when there is that much force going through sewers, it will come back up through the basement drain in the toilets, even on the first floor. Because that happened to me. Water was coming out of the toilet on the first floor. So I'm just saying, the force of the water from that rain going through the infrastructure was so strong that I'm not sure. I'm not calling it an act of God, but I'm not sure any sewer system could handle that. And I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crebyl and Dan Crumpler and Matthew.
Yeah, I think Jamie may have had his.
Kevin, thank you. Great presentation again. A couple of things that I picked out while you were going through there. One is you said that paved surfaces make things worse, right? Because there is no possibility for the. Because there is no possibility for the ground to even attempt to absorb it. And so the areas that we have in the city where we have a significant amount of pavement actually can cause issue, be that parking lots or streets. The more the wider the streets are, the the more possible issues we have. Is that a fair statement? The water's got to go somewhere, right?
Right. In in a normal rain, they cause more runoff than water that falls in the yard, for instance.
Yeah, it was. So that's just and and that's a a topic for a different day. But I like to see that you brought in at the end, the green solutions with porous pavement as options. Because while it may not have helped in this particular situation, in the future and other things, it will help. The more water we keep out of our systems, the better off we're going to be across the board, hence the conversation about ponds. One of the things you showed us a couple of pictures of of detention basins and the one detention basin did overflow. And you showed us the path of where it went and the size of that basin. But just curious, does that mean that we should go back and dig that basin deeper? To add add additional capacity to that basin? I'm just what the what kind of recommendations happen with that scenario?
That's a great question, and I think the answer is is that I would have expected it to be full or overflow. Because the basins are designed for that hundred year event, the 1% probability. So at a hundred year rain, the basin should be full. If we're saying it's a 500 year event or more, it should be overflowing. And so that basin behaved exactly as I would have expected it to. Now, there could be some other opportunities on basins that big. That the the outlets for a basin, a lot of times are just a single stage outlet. And what that means is that, let's say that basin has a 24 inch pipe for an outlet. You know, the pipes coming into it might be eight foot diameter, but it restricts what's going out of it. A multi-stage basin might have two pipes instead of one, and one pipes up higher than the other one. So that as the basin fills up, it starts letting more water out, so it doesn't overflow right away. But it does a lot of benefit for small storms and helps out big storms too. And that that is a fairly recent thing that is is more becoming standard. But most of our basins were designed at a time with a single stage outlet and not multi-stage or two-stage or whatever that might be. So that's something that we could consider too for the because the basins in ideal world would be at capacity in the worst rain, which is, you know, designed for the hundred year. In this case, we had more. So like I say, the fact that it went over, I I think it worked exactly as it should.
Okay. Side questions only only tangentially connected to this conversation is we're talking about the amount of water that would have filled like Bloomington and like Evergreen. Is there, you know, we've we've in past council meetings, we've talked about the need to increase increase our water capacity in terms of our freshwater system. Is there a conversation we should be having at some point about digging those actually digging those deeper as well to capture events like this and save and retain that water for future uses? And we probably don't need to bring that up now, but that's just a thought that I had when I was thinking about the amount of water that we're we were getting compared to other parts of the United States where they're getting no water. How do we capture and save that and and maybe capture a little bit of silver lining out of it in the future at some point too? So that's something I would like to talk about in the future when we talk about our freshwater system. The 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 pond that's near the public works area is actually we're using most of that area right now for various things. For vehicle storage and parking for the citizens convenience center. Instead of having it on the north side of the tracks where it was in that circle, is there a possibility to put in the south side of the tracks where the old bus barn was? Or is that not a big enough area? I was just thinking, I don't want to move all those buildings or have to put that in the conversation. Can we put it south instead? Because nothing's been there for years.
Yeah, the the south side is a smaller footprint. It's also more more elevated, so there's more earth to remove and potentially a bigger wall there. But I think that as we would look to do some additional modeling there to see what the right size is, we could look at that as an option.
Okay. I think that my point of view, I think you're going to get pretty unanimous support to do as Billy proposed. And we're in the design phase right now for one of the sections of this Locust Colton. And if we spend the money now, we can redesign that, move the timetable up. I think we're going to get unanimous support for something of that nature to to make that happen now. So I would like to see my proposals, I'd like to see us start making those moves to make that happen right now. At the same time as that, we can start doing things like schedule the watershed, hydro mapping that you were talking about as well in order to make educated decisions. But we can, we can start moving on the CSO right now at the same time as we do that other stuff. So I I would like to see those two ponds get built because I do understand that the more water we remove from the system, the less likely we are to have these issues, right? Your analogy of a highway system that's congested with cars is the best analogy I could think of as well. So kudos on that one, but let's make the moves on what we do know the answers to. And then let's start the ball rolling on the rest of the stuff in order to have information to make educated decisions. And and I think I'll just let it go from right there.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crebill.
Thank you, Mayor. Went to talk, I guess, a little bit about making sure that the solutions that we have are equitable. So it sounds like in the next five years in the five year plan, most of that money is going to go to Locust Colton. Is that correct?
A a good chunk of it does outside of what we have for sewer assessment and sewer rehab.
Right. And and did I hear a number, I don't know what meeting it was, to complete Locust Colton was 25 million? Is that?
Yeah, it it's close to that, yeah.
So so basically, that would take more than potential the the funds we have from the from the American Rescue Plan to do that, just the numbers. But I did not see in there any anything about separating combined sewers other than in Locust Colton. Why why was that, I guess? Why aren't we talking about that as a as a solution? I understand that's that separating combined sewers doesn't solve all the problems. But doesn't it go to a civic significant degree to solve those problems?
Separating the sewers can help, but without a place to separate them to still leaves that there's a lot of flooding that can still occur. Once again, I I recommend hydraulic modeling to see what what the impacts of separations are and what might be needed to help with the flooding. Because just just separating the sewer can help reduce basement backup, so to speak. But the surface flooding is still a major impact. And if the surface flooding is still there, you haven't necessarily solved all the all the flooding issues, so.
Has there been any, like when we talk about the I I guess the 2014 Master Plan. And it did an analysis, I think, on Locust Colton in part, as well as the Oakland watershed, right?
Right.
Was has there been any anything like that done or maybe doesn't need to be done further west town?
It 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 still needs to be done. I mean, the the Master Plan did some modeling, but not complete modeling. That's where in the recommendations, we would want to do selected modeling to, you know, ideally, we, like I say, we would model our whole sewer system, which is a great goal. But there's a lot of work that goes into developing the model and calibrating it. Because not only do you need the diameters of all the pipes, you need the elevations at each manhole. And so there's a lot of field survey work that goes into that as well. So that's where our recommendation and we'll get back with our team and figure out where those select areas should be and what we think that will cost and try to get that moving along. But, you know, I don't foresee doing the whole city right away, but doing those areas that are critical that we may already have a start on. Because, like you said, Locust Colton was modeled. The Oakland that contributes into the Maysfield CSO areas, some of that was modeled and some of that through downtown. But there's, I think, more modeling to be done and also updates the model to make sure that, you know, we get, you know, good information in, so we get good information out.
Thank you. And so do you think, I guess, I want to make sure that when we talk about building these detention ponds and finishing Locust Colton, do we think they can be done, I want to say at the same time, but do we have to get Locust Colton done first before we can do the detention?
Not if we have the funding in place. I mean, part of the challenge there is going to be figuring out how to fund all that, right?
Right. And then, I don't know, contractors, finding people to do all that work, will that be a potential problem?
Yes, it can be. Having a lot of projects going on at once can be a problem from a funding standpoint, a contractor standpoint, and also a staffing standpoint that we have enough people to manage all these projects.
Yeah, I know. That reminds me, I I noticed in the Master Plan from 2014, there was a recommendation of hiring up to, I think, close to 10 people.
Correct.
Have we done that at all?
We have done a little bit of hiring, but nowhere close to 10 people.
I it was, I was interesting. I don't know if it was just the release, it was same as a relief system that you were talking about. But I think that Master Plan talked about a parallel system that went along and and they were talking about using that to separate, right, the the sanitary and the storm. How much of the how much parallel system is there that like how many miles, any idea?
I I don't know off the top of my head. There is some.
Is that something that's on in the in the radar screen at all to do that?
Not right now, but could be.
Okay. Let's see. Cities. Oh, is there anything that would show kind of what like what damage from the from the recent storms were were flooding? And what damage was sewer, right? Is there any? Has do we know that or have any kind of mapping of that? Or did I just miss it and it's it's somewhere?
Yeah, no, we haven't prepared a comprehensive map of that. We have, you know, in the data from PMA claims or the data from EMA. There's different information that was collected. And it's almost looking at each record and trying to do some interpretations of what was said to figure out, was this a result of a basement backup from a sewer? Was this a problem with a sump pump failure? Was this a problem with groundwater leaking in through the foundation wall? Was it a problem with a window well that flooded and got water through a window? There's all these different scenarios. And it it really takes quite a bit of effort just to look at each record and then come up with a determination. We have not taken the time to do that. Our folks have been busy trying to help people when they call in and and solve problems and do other things. So we were able to just take the data that was given to us and map what we could.
Right.
But that level of detail, we can't do yet.
Okay, thank you. And then I thought you mentioned like part of the city is in a FEMA flood plane.
It is.
So people in that plane, you may not know this, and but they may they may be able to to obtain flood insurance.
Yeah, the 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 properties that are in a FEMA flood plane fall in a different category for some of that stuff.
Sure.
And and interestingly enough, most of the PMA claims are not in FEMA flood planes.
Okay, one last thing I just wanted to point out. I understand just learning with regard to the overhead sewer system. I was told that community development actually sometimes pays for the rest through CDBG funds.
That there's that possibility if the people qualify income wise, yes.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, again, thanks for your time this evening. I certainly always learn a lot listening to your presentations. Actually, I wanted to follow up on Jeff's question, the overhead sewer program. So I guess I'm really interested in individual homeowners age own agency, you know, to make in that structural changes. And so if someone applies for that program, the application comes to the city, how long does it take to process that kind of thing?
That's a good question. That actually, that person that administers the program is in economic community development. I think that process probably can take at least a a month from the standpoint of there is requirements that the sewer service be televised. And and if there's defects in it fixed before the overhead sewer program goes in. The city works with with the the homeowner to for their individual circumstances to figure out how that system needs to be installed in their basement. And then that gets like quotes or bids, if you will, and has to be awarded by the city. So I think that process can take over a month.
If you know, yeah, and I guess I'm I'm thinking about the notion of acceleration. I mean, I I really appreciate all the comments from my fellow council members this evening about trying to accelerate this process. If there were additional funding in something like the overhead sewer program, could blocks of of homeowners whose property, you know, who who were trying to improve their their sewer lines with the overhead sewer program? Could those be accelerated in a program like that as well? You know, I guess I'm trying to think about I I realize, you know, that the length of time it's going to take to get some of this work done. But I'm also interested in what mitigations we might be able to, you know, come up with, you know, to help people in the in the meantime. And it seems like that this overhead sewer program could be something like that. Would that be a fair question?
Yeah, I I I think that you could, you know, group some homes together and work it through the process together. Obviously, you know, I have to work with economic and community development on that. But I think there's some potential opportunities there to do that, yes.
Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've seen.
Can you?
I think I've seen Billy.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know, is is it you who wants to go first? Because I saw Councilmember Bowlen first. I didn't know.
I actually, I was just trying to signal that maybe Billy had a comment to make. And I may have misread that, Billy, but I saw your like come on and off a few times. And so I just wanted to gesture toward him.
Sure, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that when we said expediting Locust Colton, it is expediting phases four and five. And what that means is not the whole project, but what that means is that you will have completed phases one through seven, one through seven of a nine phase project if you expedite those last two phases. So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misleading or misspeaking to that.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. I didn't realize what you were trying to do. Yeah, then, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Councilmember Becker.
So just one other thing, we talked about last week about not just expediting funds, but making the process a little more efficient. So when we do vote on this, can we find a way to propose a system that makes it quicker and easier for us to make decisions as it relates to this stuff? So I would just request that if we can do that, it would be great.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Would you mind? Just want to make sure that Councilmember Creo didn't want to comment.
Yes, yes, we did ask and she's not. But maybe let's ask again, just to be sure.
I think I think everybody asked really great questions. I'm I'm listening. Thank you, Kevin, so much for the presentation. It was really, really helpful.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. It doesn't look like there's anybody else. I guess my my question is for for staff, you know, again, I, as I stated earlier, there is a desire to expedite this. And and it is probably for City Manager Gleason. So what can we expect in terms of a a plan, not only timelines, but as well as finances, you know, how we finance this?
I think it's pretty clear after tonight's discussion that staff need to come back to council with recommendations based on the conversation tonight. And that is, what's it going to take to expedite? And then also also the mitigation possibilities that we have, and we understand that now. I mean, in past conversations, staff was really left to, are we going to start preparing a a relief program, direct aid to the victims of this storm? Are we, is there a level of satisfaction with the plan that's already been in place? It's not like there's not a plan. It's just, is there satisfaction with the plan that's already in place? Or are we going to expedite the infrastructure? And after tonight, we honestly have clear direction of marching marching orders. And we'll try to make that turnaround for the 23rd this coming Monday.
Okay, thank you all very much, and we definitely appreciate your your time and your your expertise. It's been very, very helpful and the amount of time that you spent here, you know, in this room. At least you weren't standing. She has to sit down. So thank you very much. Let's see here. Sorry, my computer went to sleep for a second. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a council initiative that is to be presented by Councilmember Ward, which is which is to create a plan to provide near-term financial assistance to residents whose property was flooded with sewage during the storms of June 26, 25, 26. So just want to remind you about the procedure when it comes to this, is that this is not intended for a discussion, a long discussion. Basically, Councilmember Ward is going to present her initiative. And then after that, people will have, you know, we basically have three minutes for her to present. And then another three minutes for people to say whether or not the initiative should move forward. Okay, Councilmember Ward?
Thank you. So hopefully, everybody can hear me. The, the item that, as the mayor has just read, is also on the agenda, so I'm not going to reread that. Really, the purpose of this is for us to not lose sight that, yes, we need to attend to the longer-term, big-picture issues to prevent this kind of thing from happening. But there are people who have been affected by this. This is not about blaming anybody. It's not about, about casting aspersions on anybody. But there are people, real live people, whose homes are hurting and who they themselves are hurting. And there are people who continue to be in places that the foundations are broken, their houses are broken, and they need help. And I believe, and I think others on the council believe, that there, that we have a duty as public servants to assist people when they are hurting and they are encountering problems like this. And so all this initiative does is to simply direct staff to please come up with some ideas, recommendations for where we can get some money to provide assistance to people who have been damaged by the, the events of the 25th and 26th of June. We have people who have, have holes in their foundations that are big enough for you to drive a car through, who have mud, wet mud in their basement, knee-deep still. I'd, I'd be happy to take you on a tour or show you pictures of this. And these people don't have the funds. There, there are other programs that have been raised, for example, the SBA loans. And I'm hearing from people that they don't make enough money to qualify for a loan like this. They just don't have the money and they stand to lose their homes. And if we really, truly value stable neighborhoods, these are people who have lived here for decades, who are experiencing this kind of trouble. And they just don't have the resources. So I'm calling on my fellow council members, not out of any kind of legal obligation, but out of a moral obligation for us to step up and be the kind of people who care about our neighbors. So that's why I'm asking you to vote for this, for moving forward with this initiative.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ward. So I guess we're going to go in order of Ward, right? Just like we had before, and very quickly say whether or not you support the initiative.
I have a procedural question.
Sure.
I, I know our last time, you, there was like three options, and I think.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
I think she kind of stated it in a way.
Well, my, if, if you want me to, my.
Yeah, just to be clear.
My proposal is that we direct city staff to come up with a plan in the near term to provide financial assistance to people who have been affected by the storm and that we move that forward. Is that?
Okay. And is that option number two then? It sounds to me like it's option two.
I can get it in front of me. I think so.
Have the staff evaluate.
Yes.
Prepare an analysis. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. So there's, there's no option one or three, we're only considering two. Right, okay.
Isn't the procedure that you can say yes, no, or table? I thought that was the question that was being asked, not. Procedural question. Mr. Mayor. An initiative.
Not sure my mic's on, but, yeah, probably the best option is to have a motion on the table. And so there could be a motion that directs staff to evaluate and to bring back
And then a second.
these future ideas, and then get a second to that, and, and that could be voted on. So really, what we need is direction to staff at this point, so, so that comes. This is one of the things that we can do at the committee as a whole, would be to have a motion that is made. And those are kind of the three options that are outlined, but each of those could come in the form of a motion. Does that help?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So motion for number two.
That is my motion.
Okay, all right. Second.
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Emig. So now, Madam Clerk, would you, let's call it a roll.
Now that there's a.
Oh, we only have three minutes.
Right.
Right? And we barely had discussion before, just.
Little, little discussion.
People can say why briefly, but that's how we've done it before. Okay. So the motion is to have staff evaluate and prepare an analysis on the, the proposed initiative and bring it back for further council discussion. Everybody good with that? Good with the seconder? Yeah, okay, good. All right.
Do you want me to?
No, no, no. Councilmember Emig had seconded.
Yes, I am good with that.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So we're going to go ahead and vote?
All right. I, Councilmember Raffey.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowling.
No, I think that it's a noble initiative, but I think the moral obligation falls on the council to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and possibly reach out to other community entities to assist in this case.
Councilmember Motney.
Thank you. I'm still not quite sure I'm clear on what I'm saying yes or no to. There's been no parameter given in terms of funding source, in terms of the amount of money that we're talking about. I can't get my head around the logistics of all of this. And I feel like there needs to be an opportunity for conversation around that. I'm incredibly sympathetic to the situation and the plight of the people in our community. I just don't feel like I have enough, if, if I say yes, then we're going to deflect the attention away from fixing this problem and diffuse it with looking at a near-term opportunity that won't necessarily be in alignment with what I think is best for the community in terms of our obligations. And I know I'm still learning the procedure here with these council initiatives. I, I'm just uncomfortable with the lack of information that I have to say that it's okay to go ahead and prepare a proposal to actually do it, if, if that makes sense.
If, if I could comment to procedure really, really quick. So the options that are laid out are, yes, I want to talk about it more and it's going to go on agenda. That's the number one. Two is the staff evaluation. And then three is, no, I don't want to hear about it on an agenda. And if that happens, it can't be brought back, back again for a certain time period. So with number two, it's kind of a combination of number one, you are going to get that opportunity to still, still discuss and consider things forward. They'll just come with more information, just saying that for clarity.
And I, and I should add that if you, if you look at the council initiative, it's, I think it calls for minimal amount of work by staff. Was that five, five to 10 hours, right? Is that something?
I believe that's always anticipated.
So what is your?
I'm, I'm fine with having the conversation so long as really it's not going to be a distraction for these very people who are trying to solve the root cause of the problem for the societal good for the longer term here. That's where I feel like we need to keep our focus. If I'm saying yes, just to agree to the conversation, which I thought was option one, which we weren't voting on, that's, that's where I'm getting a bit hung up. So you're saying that option one and option two here are folded in together?
I, I'm just saying that option one is, yes, I want to hear more. And staff are not really preparing anything for you. Option two is staff are going to do some additional resource to provide you additional information that's been discussed, and then that discussion will continue at the meeting.
I have, again, a sincere empathy for the plight of what has been faced here by our community. But under that circumstance where we're already going to prepare a plan, I, I don't feel that that's our role, and, and I would say then, no.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Emig.
There we go. I don't think it's mutually exclusive. And what we are asking staff to do is to prepare some information to, to evaluate those parameters that could inform a discussion. And I think it, it, the, the time spent on it would, would even come from a different source. So I vote yes.
Council. Becker.
From information we've already been given, I kind of think our hands are actually tied behind the scenes to whether we can do this or not. So I, I'm going to say no, and similar to Sheila's comments. But I, I don't think we can do this the way it's stated legally, anyway. There's a lot of parameters that are, everybody might not be aware of that limit how the city council can act, and this falls into that. So we have to follow the law.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Corio.
I think it's a great idea. I thank you, Councilmember Ward, for bringing it forward. And yeah, I agree with you. It's absolutely our role and our responsibility to assist residents that are hurting, and those things are not mutually exclusive. But there are folks who, as you mentioned, still have not gotten back to normal. And we can't think about the long term if people are suffering and not able to live their lives in the immediate term. So, yeah, I'll support it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Trable?
Yeah, I don't think our hands are tied, and I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. You know, if, and, and if the state can give us money, right? How, I don't see how we have less flexibility to give our own residents money. And also too, we talk about logistics. If we get state money, we're going to have to determine those logistics of how to spend that money as well. And, you know, I think this should be focused on the poorest of our residents that are having trouble just mitigating the, you know, versus even rebuilding, they're just mitigating. So I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crumpler?
You know, I'm, I'm really, I mean, this flood was devastating, and, and we've heard, you know, so much information and testimony that that's the case. And I, I am so sympathetic, you know, to what the needs of our community. You know, I, I'm worried. I look at the Illinois Constitution, and it only seems to allow use of public funds for public purposes. And, and to be honest with you, I'm really concerned about using public tax dollars in a, in a relief fund. You know, and I just am not certain, I, I guess I feel somewhat like, like Sheila does. I wish I, you know, I wish I could hear some other additional information and some additional discussion before I vote to charge staff with moving forward on this. You know, I, I, I just feel like I, I would benefit from some more information. I understand completely, you know, the timeliness of this, but, but I just don't want to do anything that goes against Illinois statutes. So in this case, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. I, I think we have, it's five to four, right? So the item passes, and, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the names?
The names are Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Motney, Councilmember Becker, and Councilmember Crumpler.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have a handful of comments. I know we're running long tonight on what I believe to be a very good council meeting, a committee of the whole meeting, rather. Phil, if you would, put up the first slide. Bloomington Parks, Fall 2021, Bloomington resident registration begins August 26th. That's next week. And non-resident registration begins the week right before Labor Day. Next slide, please. New BCPA season is announced. You can see that at Arts Blooming. Is that Arts Blooming or Arts Bloomington? ArtsBlooming.org. All right. Next slide, please, Phil. Two new hires. We have Eric Crabtree, Maintenance Coordinator with Fire, and Michael Urban, Custodian with Facilities. Michael was a contract employee and became a full-time employee of the city. And a nice hire there with Michael. And additionally, wanted to share just a quick COVID update. We still remain in the level that we have been the past couple of weeks after the governor's office made the changes. All eyes are on the universities, Illinois State and Illinois Westland, working very closely with both presidents and cooperation with them, McLean County Health Department. So all eyes on students returning to the community. And realize that it's not entirely about that population, but I know that we're going to have an influx of residents to the communities. And then lastly, we had the police chief finalist meet and greet. We have two finalists that were here just prior to the committee of the whole meeting. That is Deputy Director Jamal Simmington. He is Illinois State Police for nearly 25 years. But then also, the other finalist is Chief Kenny Winslow, 25-plus-year, 25-plus-year veteran with Springfield Police Department. It was well-attended. Appreciate the, the community coming out. And also ask that if you have any comments that you would like to share with me, we're going to collect those via email. And I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager to help me out with that real quick. And that's going to be up and in place through close of business on Wednesday. I know it's an easy email, and I forgot it.
It's embarrassing, so did I. I want to say it's new chief, newchief@cityBLM. Nice. Newchief@cityBLM.org.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, and I think we are ready to adjourn. So is it a motion to adjourn? Okay, seems like already it's boycotting.
Second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, is any of us saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night, or for the rest of days.